Called meeting order. Please stand in the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hold on to your siren, please. Thank you. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools and the sake of our students. We do want to hear from citizens, and there is a time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their district. We also ask that your comments be limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable in length. If you have more information that you can summarize, and more information than you can summarize in three minutes, please provide a leave behind materials for the board's review. Moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time is eclipsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from the board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. And the motion to adopt agenda.
So moved.
Did you want to?
Oh, oh.
Which?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did. I'd like to propose that in the interest of time for Heather Kilpatrick, there's 6.3 is the Sharon Kilpatrick resolution. Could we move that? I'm not sure where would be the best to do it. If we could do it 3.5, or I don't know, 4, I don't know.
We could make it 4.1 to give her time.
4.1.
To log in, she's not there yet.
Okay, yeah. That sounds good, 4.1.
It's been requested we move the Sharon Kilpatrick item to 4.1?
Yeah, so it's 6.3 moving to 4.1.
Is that the form of the motion?
I moved that we, yes, I did.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three. Okay, there you go.
I just have a quick question. Do we have quorum with through this here?
Yes.
We do.
Three.
Three's a quorum.
Okay.
Okay. Now, may I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I moved to re-adopt the agenda.
As amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Donations.
We do not have any at this time.
No donations, okay. That might be the first in eight or 10 years. We have a motion to adopt the minutes from the school board meeting and the school board retreat.
I will re-adopt that.
It's been moved.
Second.
And secondly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Verification of the bills. I did review the bills. We're still in the black, and that's a good thing.
Couple weeks in?
Yeah.
I say, less than 5%.
Yes, 5%. All right. The consent items. Donations, the bills, the attendance report, that we didn't have any, the homeschool report, we don't have one of those.
Really, it's just the bills.
Okay.
The consent agenda.
So, the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Six point, I mean, 4.1, Sharon Kilpatrick.
I do not have Heather on. Would we like to wait?
Yeah, maybe I'll just, I just texted her. Oh, but I didn't go through because I don't have that on. So maybe I'll, maybe we could just wait until she pops on. She is definitely coming on.
Okay. So can we, is it okay to have it more of a floating agenda?
Sure.
Under my reports, so it's.
Yeah, she is ready.
We'll just go to, she had more of a strategic plan and.
Okay, we'll start there.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Our first item under the reports of the superintendent is the Headwaters Strategic Plan that will be presented by our new executive director, Claire Shadler. If you miss yours, I will bring up your presentation. Thank you.
So I'm excited to share with you guys our strategic plan that has just started for this fiscal year and for the next three years. And the first slide on it, do I have the latest slide or no? Okay.
I got you.
The first slide on it is a change in our mission statement, which I think is pretty important for the schools and for our organization. On the slide up there, I have the previous one as well as the current one. And you can see that the current one is just more focused on the public schools rather than saying all of Rapid County. And I think that will just help Headwaters be a little bit more focused in what we're capable of doing and what we want to spend our attention working on. And then just sort of the wording of it in general, I think is more focused, really thinking about programs and opportunities and making sure that both students and teachers are included in that. So I think, while the previous one also is a positive statement, I feel like there's some focus and clarity to the new one that is, will directly impact the schools. And then here, we also edited our values, so this is different than what has been like on our website and our different materials. But yeah, these are the things that we want to keep in mind as, as we are, you know, putting these programs into place and running them and working with you guys. And so that's just a sense of community and also working with different local organizations and other groups, making sure that people have professional development, both people on our own staff and anyone else who's involved in these programs. And yeah, the last one, big things like imagination, critical thinking, and just making sure that this is how we are, that we're keeping these values in mind as we go through our programming. So we created like four priority areas, basically. I'm not going to talk about all of them, but these are the four that we have. And within our strategic plan, we break all four of these down into more detailed sort of action items. But I'm going to focus on the second one because again, I think that's the one that's most relevant to all of you. And that's just the different programming that we provide. So a big piece of that is the idea of evaluation. So we're looking to work on how we can evaluate our programs and make sure that they're having the impact we think they're having. So yeah, those words were picked carefully, but yeah, refining and just making sure that we're doing well the things we're doing and not sort of just, you know, having run the programs that seem good but maybe aren't actually meeting the goals that we have for them. So then within evaluating and refining our programming, we're thinking of both the elementary school and the high school, and then things that would be across the whole public school system. And those, again, I'm sort of picking and choosing the things that I think are most relevant to all of you. The other piece of this is being an incubator for other community programs, like we did for our summer course program that Headwaters did for a while, and then we moved it on to the Windmore Foundation. And then the evaluation, again, that's a piece that we're thinking of that maybe isn't directly impacting you. But so yeah, thinking of what we're doing for the elementary school, what we're doing for the high school, and then what we're doing across the whole school system. So for the elementary school, these are sort of our core programs. As you guys know, we have our after-school program that Lacy Jenkins runs in the afternoon during the school year, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And in conjunction with that is the third piece, which is read, where we have volunteers come and read with students who have been identified as needing extra support in reading. So we have volunteers come and work with them during the academic piece of after-school. So making sure that while the other kids are doing, have homework time or other academic things, it's not like some kids are off having a ton of fun outside and these kids are being forced to read. It's an academic piece of the after-school program where they get pulled aside and work one-on-one with volunteers who read with them. And then our summer programming, which I think you guys know about, is the Spark Program that we did this summer for the first year, which is a collaboration between CCLC, 4H, the public schools, and then us to provide summer programming. So those are sort of our three core for the elementary school. And then for the high school, as I think you guys know as well, but we're excited to have Sierra be a part of the high school and be spending some time here and helping continue to expand our college and career access program and how that can coordinate with the profile of graduate team to offer high school students all sorts of options for once they graduate. And whatever that looks like for students, if it's two-year colleges, four-year colleges, trade programs, or certification programs, or technical programs, just making sure that they have something, have help and support to figure out what they're going to do after high school and having Headwaters support them through that process. And yeah, then part of that is our Next Step Expo that we did last year, and we'll also do this year again in coordination with the profile of the graduate team. And then this is one that we really want to tell people about because we feel like maybe it's a little bit under the radar, is across the board for K through 12 teachers that we have educational enrichment grants that they can apply for to get funding for all sorts of things. It's a fairly simple application on a rolling basis, and teachers from any grade can ask for financial support for a project or resources for the classroom or, I don't know, if they want to bring a guest presenter or something, they apply, and we have a committee that reviews the applications and provides grants for them, and that's across the school system. And so that's it. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
I had one about the grants. I was, I was under the impression that there was sort of an idea to gather a sort of database of exciting and curriculum-aligned field trips or visitors that could come to school or, you know, all school kind of like, you know, a museum that could set up in the gym or something like that. And I'm wondering if there's been progress on that or if there's community input to be had on things for programs that could visit the schools, that could be available for a grant, or on programs that, you know, just if a brand, we have a lot of brand-new teachers that's been in the news. We have a lot of brand-new teachers, and that feels like putting it, just saying, hey, we've got money, why don't you figure out something extra to do, could be a little bit, I mean, I could understand why not very many brand-new teachers would dip into that if they didn't have a menu of good options that were feasible.
Yeah, so we've been working on that. We actually have a path intern right now who's doing some research for us, and she is studying education. So she's helping us find different things that would align the specific SOLs so that they could know, like, and she's doing it per grade and per subject area and basically making like a big spreadsheet where like a third-grade science teacher could look and would see a few options. Because we were wondering if that was the reason that these grants weren't being used was because application is fairly short and straightforward, so it's not like, and it's, so we were sort of wondering why, and we were brainstorming this, that like to just be like, think of something creative and amazing to do in your classroom, go, you know, might not be the easiest thing. And so it's just like, you know.
Is there a repository of the past recipients of the EEGs to give some ideas and inspiration?
We do, yeah. I haven't, we have all that information, but that's a good idea. I could go through that and just put together a list. Because even when I was just briefly looking through past ones, there were some really interesting ideas that I think another teacher would be like, like one teacher just asked to have, students had written stories, and she just asked for the grant to cover binding it all into one like hardback book. And it just was like, I think had a nice like finality to it and what.
That's the great, I wrote an EEG, well, back when it was CEP, when I was teaching, that's.
You're like, that's my grant. I was looking through past files.
Hopefully, there's been lots of voices.
Bring it back.
I have a few of those on our shelves from when I.
Yeah, they're creating, writing. Supers did that too. Yeah, it's a great project, but there were other ideas, I think, that teachers can build on. If there was just a repository.
Kind of a glossary of.
Yeah, put it on your website, your past recipients and some of the things that they've done.
But yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Would it be possible for she to come back during the new teachers week and talk about this, and maybe even have a little seminar on, give them some beginning time to think about that?
And with some deepness, like this, this works. If you're a fourth-grade teacher, do this thing, that might be.
Yeah, and we meet with the new, Headwaters helps with the new teacher lunch that Dr. Johnson sets up.
That's a different deal though. I mean, just doing the lunch is a different deal.
No, they come and talk to them about what they offer as well and how they can support. So it's a good meet and greet time for you.
Yeah. Just something tailored to each teacher could be really good or each grade.
That'd be helpful, yeah.
Because it's. Grams. Yeah, I mean, how many grants? There must have been more than 100 grants given in the past five, you know, several years. So, you know, a list of eight that would work would be probably more likely to be consumed.
A vast list. One thing about the mission statement, if I may.
Yeah.
Something neat about this and honing in with the language for, in the current iteration, is actually going to help Headwaters in a big way too, based on code language to receive health insurance through the public school as well, that we found is, it has, the foundation actually has to be specifically serving the public school entity. So that was, been a struggle. We've wanted to do something with a collaboration that way for Headwaters staff. It was just a little vague with the previous mission statement saying we serve all kids of the community, and it really, the language is very specific to, it has to be, so we can offer a subcontract through our health insurance plan that they can access and pay for, of course, and their premiums and stuff. But at least it can be offered at that rate with our pool.
Well, that's great, isn't it?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
And does this mean that other, I mean, we would prioritize filling out programs with public school students, but then could students from other schools join something like, I mean, the summer course is not under Headwaters umbrella anymore, I guess. But could.
The summer course?
Not the summer course, but if there are programs that Headwaters has that then could have space, could be by other students, or is it really, is Headwaters now just serving the public school students?
I mean, I think for something like our, like, summer program or something, I assume that, you know, that is like a collaboration, and that could be, anybody could attend that. I'm trying to think of what, I guess maybe it's a lot like the high school, like doing like career counseling and college counseling and things like that that's happening like within the school, that would only be offered to students.
Yeah, which I think is good.
You know, I think, I'm sorry, that, we're going to the after-school, and whether or not we could allow homeschooled kids into the after-school program. And part of the problem, I think, had to do with the facility, you know, that, to the public school facility.
Yeah.
And so that was one of the reasons we wanted to clarify that the primary purpose is to serve the public schools.
Yeah, I really liked the new iteration.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The important water management program now.
Yes. So the code regimen does require school boards to develop and maintain a water management program that prevents Legionnaires' disease in the school buildings. So.
This one was totally new to me. I was like, wow.
All the exciting things you can do.
We wrote this up yesterday, right?
Yeah.
We have these here for your review. Hopefully, you've looked at those. Dr. Bolt has worked with the Sewer and Water Authority as well as the environmental folks in Culpeper as well to put this together, and MDH regs. So this is, and I know all the testing has been done. So you've looked at those?
Yes.
Very good.
It's good not to have Legionnaires' disease.
It's very good. We passed, by the way. That's good.
Awesome.
4.3, just wanted to give you a quick overview of the Leadership Academy that the administrative team held over the summer. Every year in June, we get together for two days to really hone in on our comprehensive plan, set the direction for the year, because a lot of our summer work is planning for the year ahead. So this year, on the road to remarkable, we were working on North Star Leadership, and that is the book that we're studying this year, North Star Leadership by Bill George. And it's about calibrating our north star being an authentic leader. What does that mean and how to calibrate your leadership to the direction that the school should be heading according to our strategic plan, keeping it very goal-oriented. What did we say we're going to do? Are we doing it? Is my leadership helping do that? So day one was about taking our leadership compass self-assessment and really looking at our strengths, but also with those strengths in your leadership compass of authentic leadership, what the roadblocks can be for that type of leadership, and really honing in on that too, and recognizing those things about ourselves. So that was a fun and eye-opening assignment. If you're interested, I can send you that assessment too, if you're interested in doing it.
I would like.
Okay, cool. And if you want a book as well, let me know if you can study along with us. We would love that. We went through our comprehensive plan, looked at our action steps under each objective in the bigger plan, and discussed goal-setting for the year. We had a great talk about food services, which was pretty eye-opening too. There's a lot going on in nutrition, food services. It's very, very, it's a pinnacle point right now in the federal government and the state government with nutrition and school health. So that's interesting, as well as our high school now qualifying for the CEP program is coming here. It might be a little bit fiscally risky because we need to make a differential on those reimbursements, but I feel like we can do it on the track they're on. So, and we should do it because I feel like our kids need free breakfast and lunch every day to learn the best they can. So that's probably where it's going to head. Culturally responsive teaching, steering toward equity. Dr. Johnson gave us some direction there about some of the work we're doing with the equity team. Culturally responsive teaching is a part of the every teacher's evaluation, and it's a big component of that evaluation system and how you're making an inclusive environment in your classroom and what practices you use to make sure that happens. Mental health challenges. We did go through the PRIDE results that you'll see in a little while to talk as an administrative team on what that means and what we can do to help support our students and staff. And that was all day one. Day two, charting the course, we went hot and heavy into data on student achievement and mapped out our testing and interventions, what those would look like based on that data and preliminary accreditation data. Virginia Tier System of Supports is going to be a major framework we're using this year. Last year, we were in an exploration phase all year to really look at a tiered system of supports in all domains, academic behavior, social attendance, and how, and mental health, how we're going to incorporate those to make sure that every student receives the support they need at each tier level. So it is a big framework. We have gotten in with the Virginia Tier System of Supports cohort with Department of Education. We have a grant to help us do that work, and all last year we worked with a team analyzing everything, doing a needs assessment and mapping out how that will work, and scheduling, programming, specialized staffing, and what we'll need to do that. So that will be the overlay and the underpinning of all the work done in those domains, so that we'll have that common language. Professional development, calibrating the compass. We need a lot of PD this year. This is a heavy implementation year for a lot of reasons. We have Virginia Literacy Act involved course, and there's a lot of training that goes into that, so much so that the superintendent's all kind of like stormed Richmond and said, whoa, 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 we don't have enough time to do all this, help, help, help. So they did extend the training window, so we get one more year to get it all done. But it's still a heavy lift. So we have a lot of professional development teachers will need to do this year and staff. Power School, we had some training there for our information system that has changed. It's much more user-friendly. I really like the new interface, so that's going to help us gather data and do reporting a lot more streamlined. So we do like that.
Will more of Power School, like the things that are blank on Power School on our parent side app be filled from the user's end as well?
Well, this end was more of the administrative portal.
Okay.
For parent portal, yes, there should be more things populating for parents as part of the transparency and the VAS implementation. So you should start seeing more things as well, but I haven't seen the entirety of that rollout yet.
How do we notify parents of that?
Usually, we'll send out communications and have a tutorial, or certainly talk to Holly about getting those things out to all parents.
Communications.
Yeah.
So we had a great discussion about being anchored in safety. School safety is always a number one priority and always on top of our, the top thing in our minds as we see things going around in the country and around the world. So school crisis management planning and the goals that we have, we've done a lot of work on this the past year, even over the summer. We have a tabletop exercise happening next week with first responders going through a scenario. We don't even know yet what it's going to be. So we get to try out our processes and see how we did. Then pathfinding in our chartered territory, went through the BLA implementation and what that's going to look like and what's required, and how many things we have to start in motion. So it was a lot of information for the staff, but we got to go through it together and really work together to set the tone for how we're going to launch the year, I mean, next month, in just a few short weeks. We'll have new teachers back before you know it. So we are ready.
Who was at the training?
So the training consists of central office administration, building leadership, some division staff who work 12 months, so a swath of those who, even behind-the-scenes folks that are in like finance department. And so just how it all works together helps everybody see.
Yeah, yeah, see what everybody's doing.
Yes, maybe.
Yes, the more people on the same page, the better off we are.
Absolutely. Making sure we're heading North Star, keeping our North Star focused and heading in the same direction. That always helps us reach our goals a little bit better.
Do we have Heather on?
I don't see anybody in yet.
I'm wondering if she didn't, if it didn't actually.
Is she trying?
I mean, she, she wrote to me at 6:30 saying I didn't see a Zoom link, and then I sent it on the text to her. She was intending to come. She's out there.
If not, we're recording it. Yes. So 4.4, really quickly, the out-of-county tuition rate is there for you to see. Every year, we have to recalculate that based on our total state, our total budget, our state funds, federal funds. There are certain reductions you have to make on the actual expense of educating a student and things you're not supposed to capture. So the tuition next year will be $10,514.62 per student per year for non-resident students to attend that are paying tuition that do not qualify for a waiver.
How many students fit that category?
We tend to have one or, well, we've had as little as none or one to, up to five. So it just kind of just depends.
Whereas we had, I think we had, we have 53 non-county resident students last year?
57, yeah.
57.
Mm-hmm.
And how many of those 57 were tuition-paying?
Only one.
Yeah.
Everybody else had land or.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And this is about half the local private school, right?
There's a couple of them that, yeah, started coming our way. But the, the thing that that really helps with was modifying our ADM and helping additional revenue that we would not otherwise have had, but you're paying for those services anyway, basically.
Empty seats.
Yep, empty seats.
And then the comment that it says, so specialty students, that they might pay additional tuition if they need a person, an individual with them.
Yes, exactly. So if there's additional services related to any special education or other needs that are required, then as long as they meet criteria, then additional are required, then as long as they meet criteria, then additional fees are assessed for those.
What's, what was last year's number versus this year's number?
It wasn't that much. Ninety-seven hundred, I believe, around there.
Just around there.
Okay, so that's our rate. 4.5 is the annual fiscal management resolutions that we would love for you to approve tonight so that we can make sure our payables continue and we can pay people on payroll. So any questions about those and our amazing $50 in petty cash?
That's kind of good.
You don't know. These are like stamps or something.
That has to be a 1950 petty cash resolution.
Also bringing back to you the May 2024 policy updates. I see those have been before you for the last month or so. Were there any other questions about those? Okay, we'll have those, all the red lines removed and all the Rapid Hanny County Public Schools. It's already been done, but it'll be uploaded to our site after the vote. All right, 4.7, our communications and engagement specialist, Holly Jenkins, will give us a communication.
Another new title?
Yes, we have changed our title to Better North Star, our goal here.
Yes, and I'm very excited about this one. So in the past, when I've been up here speaking with you, it's been on behalf of Commit to Be Fit, so I feel like we should be doing a party break. I promised Dr. Johnson I would keep it short and sweet, so we'll just move right along. All right, so first of all, I just want to say I am so very grateful to the school division as a graduate myself, as a parent with three children that have graduated and another little guy at the elementary school, and now also as an employee here. I'm just, every day, just so grateful for the wonderful things that roll out of this, this community and the school division. So being able to share our story for me is just a dream come true. So thank you very much. All right, so let's just roll right into it. I have divided this presentation really into four parts. The first one, we're going to do a Road to Remarkable rewind. Then we're going to look at communications today, and then we are going to look ahead towards our North Star. And lastly, I'm going to save a little bit of time for questions. All right, so this role was brand new back in 2017. And while it is part-time or it was part-time and stipend, there was a lot of work to be done, especially in that first year. So looking at 2017 and 2018, we really focused on sharing our story. We created social media accounts right off the bat. In fact, Facebook was launched on September 23rd, and then three weeks later, we launched Instagram. We also started the monthly newsletter to share out the different stories and the recognitions and celebrations. Also wrote articles and shared photos to submit to the local papers, as well as formed a communications committee, which really has been such an important part. Hearing important insight from parents, from teachers, from community members, it's just really been a really good way to kind of get the pulse on how we can best get the word out about Rapid Hanny Public Schools. And also, brand new position, we've really surveyed our community, particularly our families, just to see how our current communications were in that moment, what we could do better, what was working well. But the key thing, like I said, was really the storytelling, taking pictures. We know all the wonderful things that happen within our classrooms and our buildings on a regular basis, but being able just to capture snapshots or tell stories about all these wonderful happenings and show them to the families as well as the community, it just really, it has been a very important part of this process. So you'll see a lot of happy kids, and that really, really does tell a story. All right, so 2018, 2019, we continued all that good stuff that we started the previous year, but probably the biggest change in that school year was the rebranding. That slide that you see there was taken directly from the August 2018 meeting where...
Remember it well.
I remember it very well.
Yes.
It was the most dynamic meeting.
It was definitely my favorite one because certainly after presenting the different logos, you made some amazing suggestions. Halfway in the meeting, I ran back, made those changes, came back. You're like, that's it, you adopted them, and wow, you came up with some great stuff together. But originally, we were using a lot of different logos from the school board, Apple, we even used the county seal on some of our, our website pages, the athletic logos also were mostly at the high school. So really what we did is we rebranded and focused on our three. So as you remember, the R C S with the tree represents growth, the R C H S, the mountain peaks really represents accumulation of hard work and perseverance, and then the R C P S, unity between those two schools. So well done, school board. All right, and then there was COVID. And this is when digital communications really became our main source of communications during this uncertain and unprecedented time. And I really have to applaud the school board and Dr. Grimsley for really already creating this role so that we could establish a strong digital presence. And since we already had these channels developed, we were able to move smoothly into the digital world. And the fact that we were able to make that transition was incredible. So let's see, the following year, 2020, 2021, once again, we shared our story. This time though, it was a story of resilience. We were able to show how we were able to reopen the schools to keep our students safe, which also was reassuring for the families to see, to actually see the divides, to see the masking, but also to see that kids were engaging in some pretty incredible things, even in the midst of the pandemic, like the wonderful Wednesday camp. What a, what a special time. It was also when we did our COVID dashboard reporting.
Holly loves those.
Yes, three times.
Have I ever seen another one?
You and me both, you and me both. But yes, it, it was a time also to communicate the COVID numbers, the quarantine numbers. Also, when folks had to quarantine, unfortunately, there was exposure notices that went out. So it was definitely a year full of digital communications, both the good and the bad. So then moving on, and I just really grouped 2021 and 2024 together. The focus was really enhancements and improvements. We named Rory during that time, which was a fun community engagement contest. We also debuted our electronic newsletter. Previously, it was a PDF, which they were fun, making them, I won't lie, but it's so much more user-friendly. If you're reading the newsletter on your cell phone, to have an electronic version. So that was debuted during that timeframe. We also switched to a more mobile-friendly website, which was huge. I don't know if you recall the previous one. Yes, but especially if you're looking at it on your cell phone, it was a little more challenging. So the newer one is a lot more friendly. And also, we created a monthly events calendar, which highlighted all the upcoming community events that was also shared around the community as well. That original one was a PDF version. I'll get to that in a second. So communications today, moving on. So in this moment in time, our focus really is enhanced communication and enhanced community engagement. Greater focus on communications for sure. And one of the ways that we're doing that is I've taken your suggestions. We now have the electronic calendar. And it originally was on our happiness and highlights page, which I understand was a little hard to find, and Claire came up with this amazing idea, just move it to the calendars tab. It seems like a no-brainer, right? Historically, we just had our school calendars, the year calendars there, but having an outsider's perspective, I was like, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So thank you. So yes, so that is live. I wasn't able to link athletics to it, but I do have a link right underneath that calendar hit here for the up-to-date athletics calendar. So as we start layering in more events and activities for the school year, you're going to see it's, that calendar is going to be populating and it's going to have a lot of fun stuff.
Awesome. It looks really nice.
Thank you. It was a great, great suggestion.
Then you have the sports calendar separately.
Yep, and also new this summer is our new alert system, In Touch. Dr. Bolt and I actually shopped around a little bit for this, and we found one that had a lot of advantages. It was very user-friendly for the sender and especially for the recipients. It also was on budget, which was amazing and important. And it also gives a great readout immediately for a report of the delivery. So we know right away if there was an issue.
Who will that go to?
So anyone that, we can push a message out to staff, all of our families. We can, we can break it down by grade level. We can create our own group as well, like bus ridership. So that is, that is a fantastic, fantastic new option. And the old one, it used to almost, I felt like it was like a telegraph almost, because it was just a long run-on thing. So it had to be short and concise, and it was, yeah, it wasn't as user-friendly. So this is going to be really good for us.
And it also pushes out to all your social media too, that Moncler.
Yes, in fact, in the event of crisis communication, we can push it out to social media, the automatic revocall, text, yeah, it covers everything. So very efficient.
That replaces what, Swift Reach or?
Swift Reach.
Helen, is there a way that you could push it to the citizens that don't have contact with the school or?
Yeah, I'm looking into that, if we can actually do a separate database within that one, or I can do what I've done previously in which I'm putting in email addresses into a Gmail group. So anything community-related, I could push it out that way. It's a good question. All right, so looking ahead.
I'm not supposed to get your email address.
Oh, actually, if you go to that highlights page right on the calendar tab, then you'll see there's a little link where they can just click it and put in their email address.
That'll be done.
All right, so social media, I don't want to bore you with numbers. I know I'm running out of time here, but I just wanted to share some of the performance with you. As I mentioned, we started our social channels back in 2017. Currently, our Facebook, we're up over 2,000 followers. Instagram, this was exciting. Tim Stockdale, a wonderful teacher that was here at the high school, who also would help me with some of the high school pictures. He and I set a goal to hit 1,000 followers in the spring, which we did. So that is growing as well. Also shared the reach and the engagement. The reach is the number of unique individuals that see each individual post.
That's interesting.
And then engagement, that is your likes, your comments, and your shares. Now, I also did include, and this is specific to our specific social media channels, what our top age ranges are for our followers.
How do you know that?
Actually, the social media does all that work for me. It summarizes it all.
They're analytics.
Yeah, so we've always heard, rule of thumb, Facebook generally is more of like your parents, that's how you reach your parents, your community members, and then Instagram is more of the students. And looking at this, I was actually a little surprised to see our Instagram followers, 18 to 24 was by far our biggest following, but the second group was 13 to 17. And then for, of course, Facebook, you can see that the number one, sorry, 35 to 44 years. So that was kind of right in line with what we expected. And then I wanted to look at Facebook performance from the past 90 days. The numbers I just showed you was only from the last month, and that's when school wasn't even in session. So there hasn't been as much social media activity except for this fantastic spark pictures of all the campers having a blast. But you can see here from the last 90 days, much higher numbers of reach and engagement. And our best performing post by far was from the senior trip and also prom. So looking ahead, my question for this new role isn't how do we just enhance communications and community engagement, rather, how do we enhance communications and community engagement in a way that is extraordinary? This community is extraordinary. The school is extraordinary, and I want to make sure that we can take communications to the next level. I know I can't do it alone. I'm definitely going to be looking at data from survey, from our community, from our families. I'm going to rely on communications committee, and I'm always looking for ideas, doing research, looking at the data. So I don't have all the answers yet on how we're going to get there, but I guarantee I have the passion, and I'm really excited to see what's coming. So questions?
Great work here. It's so beautiful having that calendar on the first page.
It's very exciting.
It was a fantastic idea.
Yeah, good hang there. Yeah, I, I was talking with the paper today, and the comment was that Holly gives us so much wonderful stuff, we can't not print it. And I think part of that for the older community is, is a real good way to get the information out.
Absolutely, absolutely. And a million years ago, I worked for the paper, and I also understand that that space is, it's very valuable, and sometimes there isn't enough. But anytime that they're able to share our stuff and they do a lot of it, very grateful because we are, we're each another, another group, and that's really what I want to look at too, is how do we reach that group that isn't online? Because there are a lot, and we want to involve everyone in the community.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that the paper might be able to do is do a Q R code when there's more pictures or more interesting things, that's, that's a lot. Most people do have a smartphone, and if you have things like that, I mean, it doesn't take up that much space to add, then that might be a way. We're talking about doing that with, you know, interpretive signs for environmental, you know, like any groups that could be updated. But that could be cool to have just a, you know, a little featured Q R.
Yeah.
And then it could go to the newsletter or something like that.
That's actually a very good idea.
It could be the same Q R code that could populate to whatever site we want on the other side with different stuff every week.
And then you could update it if there's different.
Absolutely.
Is that hard to do?
It's so easy.
Very easy.
It's ridiculous, but it's free.
My phone won't take over.
It's getting that. I mean, the faster you are, you could also have the W W W, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I think the Q R code just really increases engagement a lot.
It is. It's just that that one step makes it so much easier for sure. So I love all the ideas. This, this really gets me excited because I really believe one person can't do it on their own.
They have it so much.
So I really thank you for, for your time, and I'll be asking for more people to join this year's communications committee, so stay tuned.
Did you ever ask any of the quote citizens out there to join your committee?
I do, yes. Now, one thing that I have, probably I would say I haven't done as great of jobs, I've really pushed it out online. So I, this year, want to involve more people in the community that aren't coming to me from an online plea.
Right.
So, because I'd like to, to get some more information.
So we recommend somebody that you.
Please. Absolutely.
You know, if you had somebody out there that's really interested and wants to be involved, see if they'd be interested in meeting with Holly for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, there is, you know, we keep, I'm talking about Rapid Home is one, but that could be something like Fall Sports Outlook. Here's the history of our awesome teams and how well they did, and you could follow them.
They have lots of time.
Yeah, yeah. And it could be something where if you know a little bit about the history of the team, it's more appealing than, you know, this team.
This would be good, yeah. I can see myself sending this slideshow to some people.
Oh, great. Wonderful. Yeah, please.
Just to give them the, the history.
Absolutely. Wonderful. And I would love to leave you just again by thanking you for all that you do. It's really an amazing school, and the fact that I get to push out our stories, it's just, it's a wonderful job. So thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
I just had Heather on here, and then she got on. I think it looked like she might have been having trouble hearing.
I'm on. I don't hear anything, but I see a screen. I'm on. I don't hear anything, but I see a screen, is what she said. Okay.
Tell her to go back in.
Okay.
There she is.
I'm really publicly showing how I have to.
Hi, Heather. Can you hear us now?
I can, thank you.
Yay!
Yay!
Much better.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're so happy that you could, even virtually. So tonight, we do have a special resolution to read in honor of your mother, Sharon. And we, we wanted to bring it to this meeting for the board to review, and if they vote on, vote on it, to read it into the minutes. With that being said, we do hope to plan a very special presentation ceremony of this resolution. And I know that Headwaters is also working on something, too, to honor Sharon, so that we could maybe do that in conjunction at a later date. But for now, it's great that you could join us for the, the reading of the resolution. Pull that up. Would you like me to read it, or would one of the board members like to do the honors?
Won't you read it? You wrote it? Oh, yeah.
I, I'd be glad to read it.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Whereas the Rappahannock County School Board and school community deeply mourns the passing of Sharon Kilpatrick, who departed this life on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, while visiting family in Denver, Colorado. And whereas the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes the immeasurable contributions of Sharon Kilpatrick to the field of education, including her appointment and service on the RCPS School Board in 2003, and her unparalleled dedication to fostering positive engagement in the school community. And whereas Sharon Kilpatrick was born in 1939 in Washington, DC, to Donna and Walker Stone. And despite being raised in Washington, DC, she established profound and lasting connections with Rappahannock County starting in the mid-1960s, when her father purchased a farm outside of Woodville. And whereas Sharon Kilpatrick was a fervent supporter of school and education-related nonprofit work, notably contributing to a writing program for Rappahannock County high school students. And her engagement with the community reflected her dedication to enriching the educational experience of our youth. And whereas Sharon was an enthusiastic supporter and active reporter of Rappahannock school sports, arts performances, and other school-related activities, utilizing diverse platforms to keep the community informed and engaged, demonstrating her passion for student achievements and school pride. And whereas, as her professional journey, her professional journey in journalism, which began in the 1960s with the Scripps Howard, and continued with significant contributions to Rappahannock, to the Rappahannock News as a reporter and editor in the 1990s, highlighted her commitment to accurate and heartfelt community reporting. And whereas Sharon's extensive volunteer work as a Girl Scout leader, occasional substitute teacher, and her dedication to numerous causes exemplified her unwavering commitment to community service, her family, her faith. And whereas, the contributions of Sharon Kilpatrick to the Rappahannock County youth and the community at large through her unwavering support of education have left an indelible mark in the hearts and minds of those she has touched. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rappahannock County School Board hereby expresses its deepest condolences and gratitude for the profound impact Sharon Stone Kilpatrick has made on education and community engagement. Be it further resolved that the Rappahannock County School Board honors the legacy of Sharon Kilpatrick by recognizing her exceptional contributions to the field of education and her passion for the success of Rappahannock County's public schools. Be it finally resolved that this resolution be appropriately conveyed to the Kilpatrick family, and a copy be preserved in the records of the Rappahannock County Public Schools as a testament to the enduring impact Sharon Kilpatrick has had on education in Rappahannock County. And the title is "A Resolution Honoring the Life and Service of Sharon Stone Kilpatrick." I got through that.
Very nice. Glad you did.
We miss, we miss her. Remarkable person.
Very cool. Say something, Erin.
Your mom was so important to the school community and to our community. This is a small token of the board's appreciation indefinitely, but one that will be recorded forever in our records.
There you go. And we're going to try to give you some lead time, one of presentations?
Absolutely, and we will work with you on, on working that out at a future time. That may work. But we're thrilled to be able to do this and have the board be able to vote to, to put it into our, our minutes and our permanent record.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Good to see your face, Heather, and I can't see, you can't see me, but I can see you. Safe travels.
Thank you guys again for letting me know what was happening.
Great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Farewell.
Do you want to vote it in now?
Yeah.
Sure. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as a read?
Aye, this could be accept the resolution as a read.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider it done.
That was a very thorough, really nicely worded resolution.
Well, this is a problem here.
Yeah, that was important. Needs it efficiently.
Yeah, I think we can move on to the Pride Survey?
Yes. All right, 4.8 is the Pride Survey. Dr. Johnson will present the results.
Good evening, members of the committee.
How are you?
So in your uploaded documents, you should have had two different reports. One was the survey report that was released from Falkir County, which is a very good report, but there were 4,200 students that took the survey, and like 4,000 of them were Falkir County. So we thought it was very important to kind of break the data down so that we were kind of comparing Rappahannock to Rappahannock. So that's what the PowerPoint is.
I was trying to figure out how 52 kids could do this, and out of 4,000?
So, yes. So Rappahannock County has always been ahead of other school divisions, especially when we adopted our social-emotional learning curriculum and expanded our mental health team in 2019. The overall results for our students on the most recent administration of the survey have improved overall since 2019, which is really quite phenomenal when you consider that we experienced a pandemic during this last survey period. We firmly believe that this is a testament to the efforts of our extraordinary mental health team, as well as our school division's attention to meeting the needs of the whole person. So why this particular survey? Well, our school division has partnered with the Falkir Mental Health Association in administering this survey. The first one that I remember was around 2010. So we, this is kind of a project that we have collaborated with them on for quite a few years. And as far as what the survey is looking at, Falkir County administered it to students in grades 6 through 12, whereas in Rappahannock, we did students grades 7 through 12. We were feeling like we kind of felt 7th grade was a good age, maybe, to ask some of these questions. And some of the questions that were asked included the age of first use for various substances, factors that would increase students' risk, or factors that could help protect students from abusing substances. And then also in regards to how students perceive the dangers of substances, and then how students may be able to access these illicit substances, as well as the survey touches on feelings of anxiety and depression. So for us, the survey, again, was administered to students grades 7 through 12. We had a total of 242 students who took the survey, and you can see in the breakdown, the, the numbers of students that participated by grade level. Parents did have an option to write in and opt their student out of the survey if they were not comfortable with it.
And you had that, any of the opt-outs?
I did not get any information on any opt-outs.
Well, we had, what, 315, I guess, high school kids?
Right. And so I did ask the question, because some of the high school numbers were smaller. And I think that students did have, students could make the decision if they did not want to purchase pay in the survey. So in looking at overall trends, basically, this is good news. And we, I did a comparison from the 2023 results versus 2019. And as you can see from the chart, we have a greater number of students who are not using substances now as compared to 2019, which, again, I think is phenomenal in lieu of everything that we've been through as a nation in the last several years.
A little question in 2019. How many people participated in the?
In 2019, we had 238 students.
Okay, so comparable.
It's comparable, yes. So then, looking at monthly substance use trends, and, and just to kind of explain the method to my madness in this PowerPoint that I put together, I tried to follow the same things that the Falkir reported put out, so I just took the same information and customized it to Rappahannock County. So overall, monthly substance use trends have also improved for our students since 2019, with those trends basically being lower for everything in 2023 versus the 2019. The only slight uptick was in inhalants, which I found interesting. That was something that was popular with our, our youth quite a few years ago. And it looks like there's a tiny little resurgence there. But that was good information for our mental health team to be aware of, because that can be harder to detect when, you know, you're concerned with students. So then, moving along to the average age of first use. Unfortunately, for alcohol, the age of first use did drop from 12.7 to 12.12. For cigarettes, the age of first use increased from 12.6 to 13. Use of prescription drugs decreased from 13.2 to 13. And then the age of first use with marijuana has remained steady at 13.4. So where is the use occurring? So most of the use is occurring on the weekends, but there were spikes in the data for after-school periods when students are not at school, which shows how important it is that we keep our students engaged with their school and the various activities that we offer. So unfortunately, home looks like a place where students are able to, be able to participate in some of these activities, followed by their friend's house, and then other places that they are able to gather. And then the source of the substances. So overall, it looks like students are obtaining things from their friends as far as tobacco products and cigarettes. And then, interesting for the, for the 9th through 12th grade graders for the tobacco products, 43% of them are able to get them in stores. And it's very disappointing. We have more and more of those stores popping up all around. And I think that, you know, it just looks like they are not doing a very good job of monitoring the age of the, the youth that are coming into their stores.
I don't think that's an accident.
You don't think what?
No, I mean, they're purposely not monitoring the age.
Of course not. It's better than it used to be. It was a 25-minute machine somewhere.
Right. So then protective factors, those positive countering things that students experience that will help them to make a choice not to use substances. So overall, we're glad to see almost 80% of our students feel like they are being successful in school. The other numbers, for instance, 22% take part in community activities. And I looked at the, the report from Falkir. Their number was higher, but you have to consider we're a rural area, whereas they are a town that has more opportunities for our young people. So these numbers were very similar to what we saw in 2019. One thing, at the very bottom, 18% have teachers who talk to them about the dangers of drugs. And that's something that we discussed at our Leadership Academy over the summer. We really want to help give our teachers the tools that they need to be able to have those conversations with students, even if it's just through the curriculum that they are offering to the students, because we really want to see that number bigger. And then as far as perception of risk. So overall, our students have gotten the message that cigarettes are not good. So 62% of them are recognizing that. E-cigarettes is not, you know, they're not there yet. Those are still fairly popular, and they're not really seeing the danger of that. Alcohol, right there in the middle, is followed by marijuana. And then opioids, fortunately, a large number recognizing the danger of those. But this is important, because if they do feel, if they do see the dangers of it, they're less likely to use the substance. And then there were some questions related to students feeling safe in the school division. So we were happy to see classrooms, 64% of the students felt safe. Overall, the numbers there were not alarming. The only one that popped out was the students not feeling safe in the parking lot, 27%. So we weren't, I wasn't sure if that was related to the high school, and maybe some things going on, or if it's the elementary school, that the cars and the students feel like, you know, it's dangerous because of cars. But we, we do want to kind of pull our students together to get some more information on that. And then as far as bullying and harassment-type things, in the past year, we had, the majority of our students felt like they had never had anyone threaten to hurt them, been afraid that someone may hurt them, or tried to harass them through internet or cell phone, social media-type things. But again, you know, we do look at those, those smaller bars. For instance, with, have you ever had a student threaten to hurt you? And that was two to five times, and that averaged out to 13 students. Well, 13 students is too many for that. So, you know, again, that kind of falls back into our social-emotional learning curriculum as far as, you know, addressing that with our students and, and helping them to reach out to adults with that. So the big one, during the past 12 months, did you ever have thoughts of suicide? So we were at 25% in the 2023 survey, which was a total of 59 students. That 58 should be a 59, compared to 27% in 2019, which was 61 students. So that number's very close to what it was in 2019. But to be perfectly honest, I was amazed that the number was not higher than it was in 2019, based on everything that we've been on. So, you know, again, kudos to our mental health team for all of the services that they are providing to help to address these feelings of depression with our students. And then ways that our students handle stress. So we were pleased to see that 48% of them are talking to someone when they are having feelings of stress, followed by sleeping, and then exercising, and then last, fortunately, was eating, gambling, and shopping. That number was a little bit higher for Falkir County students. I guess more opportunity there. And then as far as finding people to talk about when they are having intense feelings and concerns. Friends were obviously the, the ones that our students felt like they could go to. Most often, followed by parents, relatives. That middle one, where they said no one, 16%, and that number was better than it was in 2019. But, you know, again, we want to. But, you know, again, we want all of our students to have that safe person that they can go to. So takeaways from this, again, substance use is down in all areas, with the exception of the inhalants. Out of school time is a risky time for our students. We, we firmly feel that our staff and our parents need to be able to talk with their, their youngsters about the substance use issues. Only ten percent of students reported having those discussions a lot with their parents, and then only eight percent of students reported their teachers talking to them a lot on this topic. So an area for growth there. We did note that fewer students are participating in school activities or the extracurriculars, twenty-four percent now versus thirty-three percent in two thousand and nineteen. And I'm not sure what the difference there is, but again, that's a good place for some student input. And then, the majority of students do feel safe, but parking lot, bus bathrooms are areas that we could address more with our students. So as far as opportunities, and we can skip more takeaways, so as far as opportunities, I've put this into tier language, you will notice, and you will be hearing a lot more of this in coming meetings, because that aligns with the multi-tiered systems of support. So we'll be talking about tier one, what's going to happen universally for all of our students. Tier two, what's going to have to happen that's a little bit more targeted for specific students. And then tier three are the students who are really going to need specialized support. So as far as tier one support, definitely, we want to look at parent training, and our school social workers already looking at family engagement opportunities for the coming school year to help to provide this for our parents. Tier one and two instruction, we are going to expand the BARTBEN curriculum in the coming school year. This is something that we can receive for free from one of our local community partners. So we would specifically like to focus on grade six, nine, and twelve, as they kind of were the higher range as far as students who are actually using substances. So kind of really hone in on them to try to get that message out.
Didn't we just do grade seven through twelve?
Oh, you're right.
They didn't do six.
Right. So I'm not sure where that six is.
You said that Falkir did six to twelve, and we did seven to twelve.
Right.
But the, the BARTBEN curriculum will go down to six, right?
Correct. That's, that's what I think it was, yes. So grade six will be a part of the BARTBEN curriculum, this year is the reason I included them. And then, we would like to have some focus groups to let our students talk about safety concerns, and then to continue to provide our staff with mental health first aid training to help them to recognize signs of mental health issues, substance abuse issues. We have all of our new teachers set up to receive this training during the new teacher orientation this year, and all of our previous staff has already been trained. So that will help with having some of those conversations. So that is the overall results of the Parent Resource Institute for Drug Education Survey, which is what PRIDE stands for, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
It, it strikes me that thirty percent are saying they handle stress with exercise or journal, or that, which are really things that are right in schools will have, it seems like, it might be, you know, just, you're talking about training teachers to really explicitly draw that connection. PE could be a really, like, very life skills building class if it's taught that way, and so could in our class.
Well, in, in the past couple of years, our PE teacher at the high school has actually utilized the BARTBEN curriculum during the PE classes, which includes those types of suggestions for students. I've actually watched him deliver those lessons, which are, you know, kind of giving our students alternatives in, in ways to handle stress.
Yeah, bringing that, kind of aligning with commit to be fit and things like that and all throughout the curriculum.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you find it interesting that stress level for schoolwork?
Schoolwork, yeah.
I mean, haven't we had stress level for schoolwork?
Well, I was talking to some students, because we had that conversation retreat a little bit, that we were surprised to see that. And I spoke to some of our students who, you know, you would consider very successful students, and I asked them, just, they didn't know about, you know, that I was going to, so I asked them that same question, what's like the, what gives you the highest amount of stress in your life? And all of them, schoolwork, said the same thing. And it's like, but what about you handle it fine, you're acing everything, so why are you so, it's not that, I'm so scared of not doing well. And it's like, they, they put a lot of pressure on themselves to succeed. So I think that's, it's not the work being given. It is, but it's, but not to the point where it's an unhealthy. Yes, but it's put on them and also on themselves, which does feed into some of the other things that we're seeing with student anxiety and stress and depression. So just more taking it to heart, absorbing everything, very, you know, getting anxious about things.
Are those students, you're talking about people who are diagnosed with mental health problems, or?
Not necessarily. Doesn't that, I asked her, so, no.
So, so they're, so they're handling.
I, I talked to three or four kids the other day, and I just did the same thing you did. They said, schoolwork? I said, I said, you mean like homework? No, no, we don't have much homework, just the idea of making A's and B's.
Yeah.
But it's also, I mean, I think we could expand our lexicon beyond, like, what is stress and what is drive, and what, like, you know, they're, I, I, I feel like, I feel like it's a, it's a sort of a wording.
I think so, too.
And, and it's cultural, like, everybody's supposed to be stressed in America, because we're all supposed to be so.
It's insane.
That's, that's like a badge of honor in our larger society. You know, that, that is, so, so it could be kind of parsing out, but what do you mean by stress? Like, is your heart rate higher, or are you?
Right. And how do you?
Doing unhealthy things?
Exactly.
What do you do about it? Well, I feel like going for a run, because I'm tired of doing my math homework, which is all good, you know, it's positive.
And sometimes you wish your kid had a little bit more stress. I have a very laissez faire ransom.
Get a, yeah, you get a cold, I have a little stress.
Yeah.
He chills, he chills at everybody.
Yeah, I'd be nervous if you didn't have, weren't nervous about it. Anyway, yes, it's good information to have, and as you heard, the tier language so beautifully put in place, so you'll be seeing that in just about everything we do.
I mean, ever, I just say, like, it reminds me of, I mean, I think that the expectation of no stress or of no, like, a parent's expectation, oh, my, my six-year-old was always agreeable, and now I have an eleven-year-old, and they're not agreeable all the time. Like, that, we, we've talked about how, how we can help our parents to understand normal developmental, like, normal levels of stress that families have as kids go into different stages. It might be appropriate to talk about a normal arc of a successful student and the learning and growing, and just like, when you build your muscles, you tear your muscles a little bit. I don't, I don't know if there's a way of talking about that.
Absolutely.
As a, as a natural.
Finding the audience is the hard part.
That's important, too.
Not that, not that I want people to be stressed out, but just that, that the feeling of stress can help, you know, I mean, it can make, I have some really drought stressed plants on my farm right now, and they are actually performing really well. I just, there's a lot of stress.
But there is healthy levels of normal stress, correct, in how we deal with those. But then, what we're seeing, too, is a huge, not huge, but an increase in a hyperbolic physiological stress response that is difficult to deal with in both the classroom and at home, and how to regulate that. And it is different, and it's tied to a whole lot of research about cell phones and streets and what that does to impulse control and our response system thing. So we have some students who are just sitting in a classroom, are having the same physiological response as a Mack truck coming straight at them. And that's what's happening inside their body, you know, and it's these interesting, you know, those type of stress responses that I feel like are, are triggering some of these responses, too, is why am I feeling like there's a Mack truck about to hit me, and I'm just?
Part of it stresses, I'm going to miss the thing that trends on my Snapchat or Instagram or whatever thing.
Yeah.
Which?
Part of that has helped program those responses. So, yeah, that's a big part of what the lawsuit you all sign on to is about, that research.
Yeah, but I mean, understanding, and use your guide to your brain or something, it could be a good way to think about it.
Well, and the health belief model comes into play, like Carol mentioned, in the, the PRIDE survey, it really showed the perception of risk, perception of what that is. And the health belief model is a huge indicator, and one of the, the main indicators of somebody giving up a bad habit or changing a habit, they have to understand the risk. So like, if you consider a smoker, the health belief model will say, well, I don't really see, there's a perceived risk, but not that much, but then I get diagnosed with cancer, and now there's a much higher, so I'm going to let that go. So there's a spectrum of, of what the health belief model does. So helping people see the dangers behind this and, and really the risks, and I feel like people are seeing it right now, in a big way. So that's going to help us be able to change some policy and practices around that to help students and staff and parents deal with things like that.
I like the idea of having some cohort groups to discuss all of these risk factors within a, within a student group approach to things, it would be helpful, I would think.
All right. Four point nine, the Division Literacy Plan. Karen Ellis did talk a lot about this at the last meeting, that we would be submitting a Division Literacy Plan as required by law. The school board does have to adopt it to then be incorporated into our comprehensive plan, so that's why it is on the agenda tonight for you to be able to vote on. And that will then become, I guess we'll put it as an addendum, it's incorporated into a lot of the objectives, but it has to be a separate document that we have to give to the Department of Education as well. So that's what this is. Are there any questions about that?
No questions, but I'm glad to clarify that, because it seemed a little weird.
It's the template they gave us to make sure we outline everything that they need to check the boxes, because it does have to meet the letter of the law. But you'll see the, the curriculum that was approved at the last meeting, too, the bookworms, all the supplementals, that they all have to be science and evidence-based reading instruction, where you use it for assessment, what audience trainings, all of those pieces.
So are there things that are certified, science-based?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's like a seal of approval.
Yes, and in fact, that's what took quite a long time, because they pretty much, the state did away with everything that had been approved, which hundreds and hundreds of materials from here. You know, so we were waiting quite a while for anything that passed the vetting process, and it had to meet all those criteria, so vendors were going back in and, and changing, which is a good thing, I mean, they're much stronger now. You know, when you're trying to purchase one of the five things on the list now, it's not going to get ahead of the game. Luckily, we're a very small division, so we didn't need as much. Yeah.
Can we go ahead and vote to approve this?
I mean, it is an action item.
Yeah, it will be.
Yep, so, thank you very much. All right, and that concludes my reports, thank you.
Super, thank you. Hit orders report.
I don't have any additional. We have there.
We already have. Okay, nonprofitity governor's school, we, we lost our director to Loudoun County, so we're in the process of interviewing a new director, we'll start that process tomorrow, actually, and we'll see where we go from there.
Good luck.
Well, you know, as we, if you don't find the first, the best one the first time, you do it the second time. If we figure out a way to do it, we're just, we're just hiring somebody. Information items. Delegate, alternate delegate selection.
Yes.
I'm assuming that we'll be okay, well, I don't know, we have to.
You have to officially vote, so we can submit the name.
Or to, to BSBA.
Yes.
I have no problems being the delegate. Did we recruit you for the assistance?
No, you haven't, I think the people who didn't fight with the meeting should be your. That's how that works. I'm here.
Well, Wes could be your alternate. Wes could be your alternate, Chris won't go.
No, Chris isn't going to go.
I could be your alternate.
I'll pass this year, but you can, you can catch me next year.
You don't have to do anything.
I don't believe you.
Unless I, unless I die, you know.
I still have one C.
There you go.
Things like that.
All right. No, we can't.
So they still have a train wheels on them.
We have to do this.
I'll, I'll be your, I'll be your alternate.
Okay, there you go, all right.
I, I have full faith that I will have to do that.
Mine, if we, if we all.
Okay, that's, get that in the record in the notes.
That's going to be a vote in action items, too.
Right. Board norms and protocols. I've been asked to table this item until the whole board is here.
Okay.
Therefore, it could be a unanimous decision of the board if we choose to approve it.
Okay.
And the Sharon Kilpatrick resolution we have done. Public comment. Moving forward?
Moving forward.
Wait for somebody to pop out from behind.
Okay, action items. It's too bad we can't do this as a group, all right. All right, can I have a motion to approve the water management plan?
I move approve the water management.
I second.
Said moved and second, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove the Allen County tuition rate.
I move that we approve the Allen County tuition rate, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove the annual resolutions.
Would we approve the annual resolutions?
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove the BSBA policy updates.
I move that we approve all of those updates.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The delegate, alternate, and the, the delegate and the alternate.
Okay, I approve that we approve.
Approve, so Mr. Grove is the delegate, you're the alternate?
Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove updated board norms and protocols, and that has been put on hold. The approval, no, we have to, we have to approve it being tabled.
Correct.
So we need a motion to approve it being tabled.
Suppose that we tabled the, the norm and protocols?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sharon, we've already done. Approval of the Division Literacy Plan.
I move you approve the Division Literacy Plan.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Boy, the minutes will be really interesting.
Yes.
New business, any new business?
Let's see. I just, I noticed that some people were questioning, like, right now on Facebook, some teachers are, they're, they're asking for supplies for their classrooms. And it's something that I remember being a initiative, initiative of the PTO, where teachers could, rather than get random stuff, get what they wanted through this. I'm just, I just wanted to clarify, we do have in our budget supplies for teachers, and I'd like to just have that, I'd just like to have people understand that we're not just sending teachers into a bare classroom. I hope we're not, and if we're not, then I want us to not be.
No, it's more to enhance what they have, and we took a, a big stand the past several years, actually, to say, you know, teachers, don't, make sure your, your instructional supplies money is being used on instructional supplies, not your markers and posters, and we'll supply that. So we do keep, have the amount of supplies available for teachers at both schools, and stocked up for their regular, like, office supply stuff. But instructional supplies, each classroom does have a budget, and a pretty decent one. If there's a specialized project or something that they're working on, they ask that, they always come to see us about what's, what's going on, if it's going to exceed the budget. But for the most part, they, they're, they have a pretty decent budget for their instructional needs. I think the, the other fundraisers that are online and things are just enhancements and things that they might like to have, but.
I guess, who's initiating?
It's individualized through Amazon.
Oh, Amazon, still?
Yeah.
Right, it was sort of, I think that there were some parents, or some, some people researched that you can have this list, and they said, Rappahannock School should have this list, most other, it's very common in, for a lot of schools, I mean, throughout, throughout the country, to have that as a, as a way of. that as a, as a way of fundraising. But it, so it's, I think it was just that we keyed into it a little bit later than a lot of other schools.
This is a Bezos initiative.
Yeah.
I think registry.
Yeah. But there have been a lot of them.
It hands Amazon.
A few times people have been like, what? The school doesn't pay for this stuff.
Yeah, I think we.
We seem to, I feel like I see the number being pretty robust in our, in our budget.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I see.
I just don't want people to think that.
The guild jerks.
Teachers are out there begging for things that they have to.
I think it's kind of more of a targeted giving thing. So eventually the teachers, if they want posters for their classrooms that are constantly there to fall under instructional pieces, that's kind of what they're looking for. Yeah. And people like to buy and know what they're buying for their teachers and their classrooms and their kids and grandchildren's classrooms.
There you go.
So they get excited about it and I think it's great.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing for the teachers to ask us. I just wanted to clarify, we have plenty.
Yes, we are providing as best we can, yes.
All right. Any requests for future agenda items?
I would like to get a presentation about the current state of the Ag Academy and we've talked about this a little bit in conversation, but I'd like to see, you know, just, I think that we have a lot of different Ag-related classes, not just veterinary, but across the board, including horticulture, including, we have, right now we have some interesting things going on and I think it would be good to make sure, just to get the broad base of not just a certain track of the Ag Academy, but the broad picture of what the Ag Academy is doing and new plans for the Ag.
Do you have a preferred timeframe on that or something?
I think at the convenience of, I mean, it might not be for next, it probably would be in the fall.
Sometime this fall?
Yes, okay.
If I do that, I would like to see a kind of a late fall review of the Arts Academy as well.
Yeah, both academies. And, yeah.
I think the Arts Academy would be, it would be an interesting one.
Yeah, just understand how those are related.
Sure.
Okay. Our next regular meeting is August thirteenth. Concludes what we have for tonight. Can I have a motion to move into closed session?
I'm moving to the closed.
I have a motion.
I knew that the board can be in a closed session for the following purpose. One, discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional and coaching positions, resignation of professional positions pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will be in closed session for ten minutes?
Yeah.